And then hand it off to June.
You did say that.
It happens at least three times. Welcome, everyone. June, if you want to do introductions.
Hi, everyone. I hope you all can hear me. I see many of your faces online. So, welcome to a special meeting for the Government Transition Advisory Committee. Today, we're going to be doing a training hosted by the Office of Equity and Human Rights between 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And so, this workshop is being recorded, so that folks can watch this after it is pledged. So, I'm going to go to the next slide. In terms of our Zoom overview, we'll have closed captioning available. And we will have committee members, please change your chat settings to everyone, and then committee members who are present can submit questions or thoughts in the Q and A, although since this is a training, we'll probably sort of leave that to the side and maybe address those at a later point. And then, in terms of meeting information, I just wanted to kind of round this on and why we're here today. You know, this isn't only a requirement in the GTAC Community Engagement Plan to support culturally responsive engagement, but GTAC has a commitment to reaching Portlanders about our new form of government, and this training is, oh, if you don't have everyone today, Jose, I think that is fine. But we want to be able to do engagement around this new form of government that is more inclusive. And so, as folks from GTAC are doing engagement, as well as staff, it's sort of a good grounding to be able to do, to talk about equity and community engagement. So, thank you all for being here. I also wanted to let you all know that the agenda slides and some resources from OHR are posted on our event webpage, and so you all should have the link. But for folks from the community, you can navigate to that from our website. And so, I'm going to stop sharing my screen right there and then hand it over to Yolanda from the Office of Equity and Human Rights, who's going to lead us through our training. Hi, Joe. Oh, actually, you know, I'm wondering, should we do?
Introductions would be great, and I know, so happy to see you, Joe. And can you make us, can you make Jamila an analyst as well?
Yeah, let's do that. Maybe we will start with introductions of GTAC members in the room, and then we'll do it online, and then I'll hand it over to you all at OHR. So, maybe we can start with you, Juliette, and then go all the way to Leah.
My name is Juliette. I use she/her pronouns, and that's it.
Is there any information that's useful in the introduction? Is there more?
If there's anything you want us to know, we're happy to know it.
My name is Amy Randall. I also use she/her pronouns, and we're grateful that you guys are here and excited to provide your help to share.
Thanks, us too.
Hi, Zach Pearl. Use he/him pronouns.
Joe Hertzberg, I'm a member of the committee, and I really appreciate the materials that were attached to the invitation.
We have that sent. I use she/her pronouns. Thank you so much.
Great, and we'll go online. Maybe we can go to Jane, Zach, and then Jose. Oh, Jane, I caught you eating. Is that okay? Oh, you are muted.
Still muted.
Still muted.
So embarrassed. Hello, I'm Jane DiMarco. I use she/her pronouns. And thank you, Yolanda, Yamilia, and Judith for doing this for us. I am very appreciative and excited to learn something new.
It's the blank white hat.
Oh, my goodness.
That's a trick question.
Can we go to Jose?
Hi, Jose Camero. He has pronouns. Glad to be here. Glad we're doing this.
And then we'll go, William.
Okay, hi, Bill Tennessee, and looking forward to the training. I he, she. He, him.
Terry Harris, he, him. Looking forward to it.
Hi, Lori Cuffley. I use she/her pronouns. Thank you for being here. I'm looking forward to the training.
And last but not least, David.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if there was anybody else to go. Name is David. He/him pronouns, and I'm glad to be here as well.
Thanks, David. And we'll pass it over to Yolanda.
Yeah. I like the excitement and the welcome. I am Yolanda Sanchez. I'll be one of your trainers today. I use she/her and ella pronouns. Ella is in Spanish, and multilingual, Spanish and English. I represent the Office of Equity and Human Rights. One of my primary roles is to develop equity, training, and education, as well as facilitation. And I'll be giving this training today with two of my wonderful colleagues that are going to be introducing themselves next.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, sorry about that. I'm Jamila Osman with the Office of Equity as well.
Does it turn your speaker off as well?
Right, you're next. So, I'm like scared to talk. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Nicole did warn about that, and it happened anyways, so we're only human. I'm Jamila Osman. I'm new to the Office of Equity. I'm really excited for this training tonight and to get to spend the evening with all of you.
Yes, and thank you so much. And my name's Judith Mowry. I'm currently the interim deputy director for the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and I use she/her pronouns, and I've been with the office since its inception 11 years ago. Excited to be here with you as well.
Yes. I want us to take about a minute, actually, to ground ourselves. And what I like to do is invite people to take an intentional breath and pass. And how we do that is, if you feel comfortable, you can close your eyes, which I am going to do that. And just take a moment to be intentional in this moment by listening to the sounds around you. And the body automatically wants to just take a deep breath, and so if it feels comfortable to you, you can just, you know, take deep breaths or take breaths at your own pace. And why do we do that? So, we do this to slow down. We do this to be intentional in being here together and recognizing that we are in this space together, and we're all breathing together in a very intentional way. So, it's a way of doing our welcome in a very limited time that we have. I also, I'm going to encourage you that if, sorry, open your eyes. I am going to encourage you that throughout our training, to please take care of yourself. If you need to get up and stretch, we welcome that. If you need to drink water, if you just need to take a deep breath because some of this information may be triggering or maybe difficult to, maybe difficult to digest, have yourself to rely on and also take care of yourself. So, with that said, I am going to pass it on to Judith, who is going to talk a little bit about why are we here, what is our approach, and how we're going to spend our time in the next two hours.
Thank you, Yolanda. We are excited to be here. Okay, yes, there we go. So, the Office of Equity and Human Rights and the City of Portland's approach is to make systemic change. The issues are systemic that we need to deal with. So, it's moving beyond just improving services or programs to really transforming the institution, the structures, the policies, the procedures, cultural norms, the beliefs, attitudes, you know, the whole shebang, basically. And when we're talking about racial equity, we're talking about when race doesn't determine or predict the distribution of resources, opportunities, and burdens for group members in society. So, in other words, because you live in Portland and you're black, you are not more likely than white kids to end up not graduating high school. So, that's what we mean when we talk about not that your race does not predict your outcome. And so, we'll also say something about, we will be talking about race. Hopefully, I'm not jumping ahead too much, but we will be looking at race. But our office, we have LGBTQIA+. We have disability. We have, you know, we care about all the folks who have been historically oppressed and marginalized. But we have found that if we don't talk about race, it doesn't get talked about, right? I mean, I think we can see, right, it's the third rail, something even more electorate now in our country, but it's something so challenging for people to pay attention to. So, we want to make sure we don't lose track of that. So, in our office, as I said, we do education and training. Yolanda's our manager of that work, and we do civil rights Title VI work. We aren't a Title VI, we aren't a civil rights office, but we do have a civil rights Title VI program. We do language access. So, this has been, and during the emergency, you know, with COVID, we had several of our staff who were working full-time with the, with the emergency folks to try to make sure that everyone, regardless of language, was able to get what they needed to make it through the, you know, shutdown when people didn't have access. We have the ADA Title II program, and we have LGBTQIA+ policy. We just got our second person who is working with that, so excited about that. We have the Black Male Achievement Program. That was a program that was started, it was before Obama was elected and started his My Brother's Keeper Program, and this was started by a national organization, and the idea really being like bringing together black men to kind of work on what do we need to provide for black men, black youth to be able to achieve and to thrive in Portland. And we have not, that has not had a staff personate for a while, but we're redoing that. And it historically had 23 people on its steering committee, which is big, and it also ran a summer program for youth that was very popular and very successful. And then we do a lot of like, we do technical advisement. That's part of what I do. I've worked with the Smart Cities folks, and we have gotten privacy principles. We banned facial recognition technology, and we just passed a surveillance policy, which we were excited, it took 18 months, but thank you. And that requires any technology that can be used for surveillance goes through a privacy risk assessment, so, and those will be public. So, people can see what is the risk to the community of their privacy being invaded by things like this, and then also a full inventory of all of the, all of the technology that the city owns that has that type of ability. So, it's a pretty good thing. So, back in, back when Juneteenth, so I think it's three years ago now, three years and a couple of months, our first Juneteenth, the city adopted some core values, and those, it's what you see on this, on this screen. So, anti-racism was the first one that got listed. We were excited to see the city make this strong, this, this strong stand, because anti-racism just means we're committed to disrupting racism. We're, we like to also talk about othering. We're committed to disrupting that. And, and disruption does not have to be a violent act or, or a really, you know, confrontational act. We also talk about calling people in. So, so, but being intentional about that. It also has a lot to do with understanding, if any of you've heard the term, about anti-black racism. And that is a core issue in this country, and it is a, it is, it is the core of what we need to reckon with. So, that, that is something we want to be really explicit about as well. Equity is, we've described, so the equity work is basically to make sure everybody has whatever they need to get to the same outcome, right? Can we go back one second? I'm sorry. And then with transparency, communication, collaboration, all those things actually are things that you need to do to have equity and anti-racism. So, they really all come together. Thank you. So, again, are, you see on the slide, you know, it's when everyone has access to the opportunities to satisfy their essential needs, advance well-being, and achieve their full potential. And anti-racism is the proactive and consistent action against racial hatred, racial bias, and systemic racism. So, one of the things that we do is we really recognize how we all have implicit bias. Is everyone familiar with implicit bias? So, the idea that we are, you know, we have, we have a lot of thoughts going on that are not coming to the surface for us. We're taking in so much information. So, we know that, and we know we tend to default toward what is familiar. We tend to default toward what we understand. And so, we use some center, we use, I'm sorry, a series of questions. We call them equity analyst question, analysis questions, or critical equity questions. And the idea is to make sure that we're always paying attention to whose view is being centered, right? What, what, what are the assumptions we're coming in with, and whose culture are they based on? And also recognizing whose view is not being considered in whatever room we're in. And then, really looking at who's going to be, who's benefits, and who is harmed by a policy program or a decision that's made. So, you recognize where that happens, and you know, Portland has a long history where you can look at things that happened that clearly targeted and harmed the black community. There's a lot of evidence around what has happened there. And so, you know, our goal is to try to not only not add harm, but we also want to do restoration and repair. And then also understanding what are the historical relationships with the impacted communities. And that, again, goes to what, you know, where have we been with folks? And because to really understand the people we serve as a jurisdiction, we need to understand what their experience of government has been, and we need to start with where they are with that. And as we know, there are a lot of communities that don't trust us because they have, you know, for good reason. They have not had good reasons to trust the government. They have not felt like they've had their needs met. So, needing to understand that, so that, because that cultural sense within a community also is something that needs to be addressed when you're thinking about how do you create environments where everyone can thrive? And then what do we do about disparities? You know, do we have the opportunity to do some remediation? Do we have an opportunity to make things better? So, these are just a few examples of, of some of the ways of the history of racism in Portland. You know, the historic, the historic racist land use planning contributed to the segregation and inequality for people of color in Portland. Construction of I-5 Memorial Coliseum and Emmanuel Hospital contributed to the destruction of the black neighborhood in Portland. And the KKK had access and influence on city-elected officials at one point in the city that was well-known. I would really recommend there, did you, it's in the references, the why are there so few black people in the city? Yes. And one of the things I was just speaking with our city attorney about was looking at like Lens and that area. I had the honor of facilitating when I was a consultant the first few years of the Urban Renewal Plan work out there. And one of the things that was clear, you know, there was the Mount Hood Freeway. That was another, you know, project that left a lot of mistrust in its path. And there was also, now, if you look, that's an area where a lot of people of color, people that don't have money, have been pushed into. And a lot of that area was annexed with promises of infrastructure that would be delivered, because I was asking if that would be considered historic harm, and indeed it would, and it's now impacting, you know, everyone there. But that's one of the things we have to recognize. So, because the city did say, we're, you know, we'll bring you in, we'll give you sidewalks, we'll give you this, we'll give you that, and still, many of those things don't exist in those areas. So, the goal around public participation is to involve the public and ensure that the public concerns and aspirations are consistently understood and considered. And I would say, bring the public in at the earliest possible time. You know, when you begin talking about something, it has been traditional to sort of have it all worked out and then go and say, what do you think of this? But, but really, our idea is that really good public participation that's really equitable would mean that we're bringing people in to help us do all the thinking about it. Be collaborative, you know, partner with the public in each aspect of the decision-making process. This doesn't mean that every decision has to be done by consensus with the community, but what it means is, number one, you need to be transparent about what your expectations are. So, if you're coming to the community and that what you need from them is a consultation, but you will actually be making the decision independently, you just need to be upfront about that in the beginning. And whenever possible, it's great. I mean, when I think about consensus building, it's, everybody has all the information they need, and everybody gets a say in, in sort of what kind of decisions you make. And that it's empowering, that the, the, the community does have the power to make final decisions. I think the Charter Commission, that, you know, there, the, the, was a good example of the community using that power through the Charter Commission, then being able to take the ballot measure to the people, people voted for. So, that really was in, in the hands of the public.
Are we going to be able to get a copy of this?
We can send it to you, yeah?
We already did.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, we also have to recognize the power of balance, right? And this, this totally goes back to every, a lot of the other things we've already said. The system was created by whom and for whom. You know, the system was created basically for white, Christian, able-bodied, cisgendered, you know, straight men. And, and, and so, the system has persisted, right? It's like we laid the structure and foundation down, and we, and then we fought to have other people considered and have other people have their needs met through that same system. But you can see that we have that in the middle, and this is not about, you know, anything being wrong with being a straight, white, you know, cisgendered Christian man, but it's just that's who things were built for. So, all these other people that you can see around these circles, you know, people of color, seniors, renters, people who are low-income, people with disabilities, all these folks have been in the, have been othered, have been in the position where their needs are not primary, for sure. And I would say, often not thought about, but, but I have a lot of, I think there's been a lot of progress within the City of Portland in the work we've done, and I, and I am really pleased how often I see people think differently now, you know, about who's being impacted now. Does that make sense to everybody?
I'd like to say that we are trying to expand the circle of human contract, because we're talking about people and humanity, and when we're talking about who is not in that circle of humanity is really having that intentional awareness of that we're all positioned very differently, and we navigate the world very differently depending on our proximity to power. And one way to think about power, there's many ways that, that we have access to power. And power can be the ability to do something, the ability to influence the behaviors of others, the political power of being able to vote, right? There is many ways that that power can be exercised. And in the work of equity and, and community engagement, it's important for us to start thinking about where power lies and how can we create policies, practices, procedures that gives access to power to other community members, to other groups of people that oftentimes have not been given that opportunity.
And we'll be talking more about this as we go forward. It's a very important piece. I see, David, you have your hand up? Are you there, David? You're muted if you are.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get my, my, get unlocked. I'm sorry, guys. No, I just, I had a question. So, I, in my, in my professional life, I also teach DEI. That's one of the things I do as a consultant with companies. And I've been hearing that you guys are saying that, you know, there, there, there seems to be marvelous progress here in Portland, particularly concerning people of color. I would like to know what you use as a barometer or a term of measurement to make claim like that. And not trying to be difficult, I'm just, I'm actually curious.
No, it's a great question. It's a great question. So, first of all, I want to say, I didn't say marvelous. I don't want to be apoplectic here. And I would say, so internally, more staff has engaged in, in really, you know, insisting that their work is done in such a way that we are thinking about everyone we serve. Sometimes that can have big impact, sometimes not as much. I mean, you can imagine, we're trying to change a 400-year-old culture, right?
Yes.
And we're sorry we haven't had it done in 11 years. We've really tried. But, but the other thing, David, is a great question, is I would say, and this is what is so nice about getting old, is that you have many decades to look at things, and I've been engaged in work around anti-racism for like four decades in the city. So, one of the things I've seen is if you look at things like Imagine Black, the Albina Project, the kind of things that Rakaya Adams is doing, the way in which people are organizing, and I'm most familiar probably with the black community around this, the way that people have organized, created connections. You know, I went to Say Hey, which Partners in Diversity does.
Yep, I go to that every year too, ma'am, yep.
Yeah, so two, two weeks ago, I went to the Say Hey event, and I started going to Say Hey when it was very new, and there weren't as many people there, and this, it was packed, packed. So, for me, from my perspective as a white woman, but a white woman who pays attention to race, I see, I see growth, and I will say, a lot of it comes from the community, right? The way in which the community is organized. You know, I personally think a lot of folks went off to school because, thank you, when we had affirmative action until just recently, that people had more opportunities, right? So, we have some like brilliant, highly educated folks who have invested in coming back to Portland. Thank goodness. So, that's what I see.
Oh, I think, I appreciate that. I was just, I was curious.
Yeah.
You didn't say marvelous, but I did, I did make a note of what you said.
Yeah, I didn't want to oversell, because there's still, obviously, there's still obviously so much to do. And of course, right now, it's really challenging, because it feels like we're going backwards, you know, so.
And it does. That's, that's why I was like, how does she, what barometer is she using for this?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't want to gloss over, you know, we had two hate crimes over the Labor Day weekend that have been called hate crimes that we know of. Two young black boys, 17, stabbed on the max, right? And for, with no provocation, because they were black. And think about it, that was just a couple of years ago. We had deaths on the, the only difference between what happened a couple of years ago is that, thank goodness, these young people didn't die. But, and then, you know, several instances of folks who, from Asian identity, who, who have been harassed terribly on the street. So, we are not, you know, we're not in any kind of post-racial moment, for sure.
Right.
I appreciate the question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Joe, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we're here doing this training, and I'm not sure that city advisory committees have been doing this for very long. I've worked with an awful lot of advisory committees through the years. I've worked with an awful lot of advisory committees through the years that happened.
Thank you, Joe. And you know, Joe and I have known each other for a long time as I was a consultant when he was still doing his business. And we've talked about this for a long, if you remember when we were doing the comprehensive plan update. And we started talking about this. And so we've been at it a while. Yes. And so here is an example of, this is the City of Portland Language List. So there's a whole calculation they do around the Language Access Program. And they figure out how many people of more than 1,000 people speak a language, their primary language. So these are the languages that we always advise people to translate materials into. And, you know, I will say, you know, money is a real issue, right? Like being able to afford to do these things. We have asked people to start with their critical documents. The other thing is the the Plain Language, which was an act that was passed by Congress. I can't remember the year, but it's really about making sure everyone, we try to shoot for a ninth-grade reading level in what we write. We are nowhere near it. And I just was talking to the city attorney about code, right? Every Portlander should be reasonably be able to read the code and know what it is that they're expected to do under the code.
I'm laughing because I just read some code today.
Yeah, I just saw some new code with thereafter, therefore, there. I was like, I I put it through Hemingway, which is really cool little program, and it was difficult, extremely difficult to, whatever impossible is to understand.
You, I provided to Julia a research page. And in there, it has the information for the Language Access Program Advisor, Tatiana Eljade, from the Office of Equity and Human Rights. We have a lot of subject matter experts that actually have that direct relationship and also some of them leave experience with specific communities. We, when we talk about communities that are underserved, underrepresented, of course, we're talking about multilingual communities, multiracial, multi-ethnic, people from different economic backgrounds. And we ourselves don't know it all, right? We we may have some ideas about certain histories about those communities, about certain needs. But we do have people that have, once again, that expertise in those communities. So I highly recommend to reach out to specific experts of those communities to come and tell you a little bit more about, for example, how to work with multilingual communities, how to work with the LGBTQIA+ community, how to work with the disability community. And here we are, a lot of knowledge about working with multiracial, racial and racial justice, racial equity. And language is one, one of them, right? Access, language access is is very important. And language also, it's an opportunity for to gain power, right? Communication, language, and being aware of how to do that. It's important, right, in that communication, in the language of what we're showing here. Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Russian, Somali, Ukrainian, Romanian, Nepali, Chukis, which we, I had to Google that. I was like, wait a minute, where is Chukis? So there's islands in Micronesia, islands there. So it's a lot that we that we're trying to learn and connect with communities. And I think that it's also important for us to know who are our neighbors, right? Who are, who are the groups that we often connect with? Because oftentimes, you are going to see that you are connecting to people that look like you, that have similar values like you, that have the language that you speak, right? That maybe come from similar backgrounds. And that also limits us from expanding our knowledge and connections to other communities. So that is why it's important for us to think about and say, who are the communities that we that we might need to connect with and and get to know more? I'm trying to gather my thoughts, being a multilingual person here. So there's a lot of resources out there with how to connect with those communities. You don't have to do it alone, and you don't have to start from scratch. Maybe many of you who have been active in community engagement involvement are familiar already with those organizations. There's community engagement liaisons. And there is, if you want to work with immigrants and refugees, and you are like, where do I start, right? There's, this is only one, the Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization. You want to work specifically with the Latinx, Latino, Latina community, there's Latino Network, there's a Program Hispano, right? Office of Equity is a great resource for finding out what are the other networks out there that can give me more data and more resources to reach out to community. Native people, indigenous people, right? Native American Youth and Family Center, one of them, the Somali-American Council of Oregon, that's another one. And there's many more. So find out what organizations are out there that can help you again connect to those communities. I'm going to pause here and see if any of you, Jamila or Judith, have any thoughts.
I would just say that it's important to remember, I mean, government has a lot of power, right? And has a lot of power over our lives. And it's our job to serve every Portlander. That's really why we exist, you know? And the reason that, you know, we we don't serve people all people well at this point. But and we know that from disparity studies and others. And so our goal is to be able to serve every Portlander well. And I think that certainly should be a goal everyone would agree with for government. And I bet you all do in this room and on this Zoom. And and I think, and you know, that means we have to disrupt some of our former ways of seeing each other and thinking about who gets what. But I I do, I think that, you know, the the goal again is to be actively working on a city where everyone is within the circle of human concern. And I just want to say about language, my old friend Polo, who used to talk about the immigrant folks and refugee folks who came in, there will always be people who are freshly new and don't speak English at all. And so we always, we can't wait, we can't tell the people, we'll, we'll, we'll get to you when you speak enough English, or we'll get to you when you can come to our meetings, right? So that was a part that I always think of when I hear about language, too. Did you have anything you might add?
I think the only thing I had to add is that, like Judith was saying, we have to serve all people. And the only way to serve people well is if we know what they need. And the only way to know what they need is by letting them speak for themselves in their own languages, in their own voice, in their own ways.
Right. So things to consider for that connection and that engagement are cultural considerations. So Judith was talking about that. There is different acculturation process, right? There is people who are just arriving, right? And and are learning the language, and they may still be very skeptical. And even, and even if they have been living here for years, like like me, right? So there is also that cultural component, too, that people have different backgrounds and different acceptance of the traditions and the values of this country. They also bring a lot of diversity with their own values and culture and traditions. So there is an adaptation process that can also create barriers, right? Because it might be that it might take them a little bit of time for them to engage, right? The other, the other one is about distrust of government and fear of authorities. We, Judith talked about a lot, a lot about that. And the history of just a lot of the government laws and policies were very intentional to discriminate against people because of their color, their race, because of their gender, because of their disability and so forth. So it has been very explicit in its past and its present. The other consideration is mixed immigration and citizenship status. So this is about political power, right? With this new form of government, in order for people to participate, they have to have the ability to vote, right? Like they have to have the ability to be a US citizen. And not every community that you will come into contact with will have that privilege of being a US citizen. That you will have families and mixed households, mixed immigration status, where maybe a parent may be still be in the process, right, of getting the documentation or residency or citizenship while the while the childrens were born in the United States, right? And so it's also important to consider that maybe even if you have people that are not having yet the voting rights or the citizenship status, that you will have other people within that family who are, and they do, they do share values, you know, they do share communication. And in one way or another, they also tend to participate, even when they might not have that citizenship status. And yeah, the other, the other thing is about traumatic experiences, trauma. This is where I'm going to talk about trauma. So if you want to like take a deep breath or throughout this next section, something is triggering for you, just make sure that you take time to take care of yourself. So yeah, so we don't know what's going on in people's lives, right? There is a lot of things happening in our lives and around us and how that impacts, that could impact the engagement. So yeah, so one way to describe trauma is that they are experiences that threaten or violates one's safety, health, and integrity. And that is up to the individual to decide that experience. And there is different ways that that trauma is experienced. And there is also different ways that people explain that experience. Some people may not even use the word trauma, and that's not something that they may connect with. And so that is also okay to consider, like cultural, right? And yeah, so what are the different types of trauma? So we have the acute, like maybe a one, one-time incident, like a car accident, that may have left a long-lasting impact. We have chronic trauma, that is events that can be ongoing, like domestic violence. There is complex trauma, that it is a combination of many traumatic experiences, child neglect and abandonment, and historic trauma, which is slavery, Holocaust, forced migration. And there's an intergenerational alcohol and drug addiction. So this is just some examples. And and those are just examples also to just remind us about our humanity again, because we're showing up in spaces that are required of us to to be professionals or to practice certain behaviors. And and sometimes there is a lot things that are happening that we don't know of and that can create responses in the moment with engagement.
And I noticed in the chat that William added re-trauma add mental health. And of course, trauma can impact your mental health. And having certain mental illnesses can be traumatic and create trauma for yourself and your loved ones sometimes. If you, did you want to say anything more about that, William, or just make sure we're making that connection?
You captured the connection. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Judith, for watching over the chat. Yes. And of course, trauma is also, it disconnects us in mental health, taking care of our mental health. I try my best. That's why at the beginning of this training, it's like, let's just take a minute to pause and close our eyes and reconnect with ourselves. Sometimes it's just take that one minute in trying to be intentional. And it's a practice that we're, we're trying to implement with the Office of Equity and trying to create new ways to promote mental health and also promote connection, human connection. Judith or Jamila, would you like to cover the next section about what do I, what do I need to know about trauma? Why do I need to know this?
I would say one reason is when we're working with community, one of the things about trauma is that, like, and if somebody's feeling triggered, you become emotionally dysregulated. And so I facilitate a lot of community meetings in my time. And now that I know more about trauma, I can look back and see where some participants that I honestly would have thought it was difficult, now I can see that there was something else going on with them. And sometimes it had to, and sometimes it's not even related to anything you're talking about, right? So that can be really hard. And I would just add that I I think we need to know about trauma because I think we've all been traumatized by the virus, by what's going on in our world. I think everyone is experiencing some amount of, you know, stress that can feel like chronic trauma to a lot of people. But when you, so when you think about how are you planning meetings, how are you relating to people? You know, it's being thoughtful about about building trust, understanding that takes time. And if you are not acknowledging, you know, if you are in a meeting, sometimes talking about things that have historically been hard for communities can can be traumatizing to some people, but for some people, having it ignored feels traumatizing because it's just another layer of the invisibility that they have experienced so much in their experience in the community. So it there, it's not a straight line, right? It can be tricky and it's sort of, but it's important that we understand that, that, you know, this is an impact on folks and and know about that. Jamila, do you want to do anything?
Yeah, I think it's important to start with the understanding that we're all living with some baseline of like residual trauma just by virtue of like living in this culture and living in this society where we're so disconnected from ourselves and from each other. And I think once we acknowledge that, we're able to understand that. Like if I think, I was a classroom teacher for a long time. And so a lot of the behaviors that show up in classrooms that people often say like, oh, a student is being disruptive, or a student is being rude, or a student is failing to engage, oftentimes those are trauma responses. And so when we're able to approach each other and approach situations with the understanding that, without making assumptions about people's engagement or the way that we feel like folks should be engaging, we're better able to understand and make room for people to sort of show up in their full selves. And so I think that was like really fundamental for me as a teacher to realize, like, this isn't personal. People are showing up with their own, with their own baggage, with their own issues.
Good point.
Can we use your charger, Yolanda?
Can we use your charger? Yes, we're offline for a second. Okay, we'll probably make it through, but thank you. You've been so helpful.
Yeah, and this is a moment where I'm going to invite you that to take a moment to just take a deep breath or just drink water or coffee, tea, whatever you might have.
Stretch.
Okay. Um, so what are some of the ways that we So what are some of the ways that we can practice trauma-informed practices? Like Jamila was explaining that oftentimes we tend to blame individuals for their behavior, like going on that moment and making a judgment about that behavior for that moment without looking at context, without really looking at what's going on, curiosity in this person's life. And practicing that trauma-informed mindset kind of is asking of us to think about, instead of saying what is wrong with you, to shift that to what has happened to you and what do you need? And that takes a lot of courage to actually be enabled to take a moment and say, okay, what has happened to you and what do you need? What do you need? Because a lot of the times our response is to also be defensive, right? Or protect yourself. If someone is, it's been expressing anger, expressing, and expressing their anger by raising their voice or by leaving the situation, storming out, right? Those are behaviors that are not acceptable, right? In professional settings or in a usual community setting, right? And it's difficult and it's uncomfortable, right, to be in that space. And oftentimes, once again, how do we move from what is wrong with you to what has happened to you? Reduce harm, nothing about us without us. The people that have been harmed know better of how, of what they need. So it's with that understanding of, instead of being the savior in a way of like, I'm going to rescue you, it's most likely like you are the impacted person with trust, that you are the expert and guide us in how we can reduce harm. Meet people where they are. And some people say, meet people where they are, but don't leave them there sometimes, right? And so yes, it's and, and both, you know, both this and that. And just thinking about that they're doing their best they can with the conditions and resources that they have. And it's easy to say, and I know that, and it takes a lot of practice to actually be enabled to be in that mindset of trauma-informed. Use people-centered language. We like to practice here at the Office of Equity, being very intentional about the language, right? Instead of saying a person, like someone is, someone, I'm so used to saying someone because that person's centered. So the mentally ill, right? Like we are disconnecting that mentally ill from actually a person. So whenever it's possible, try to include a person with mental illness, right? A houseless person, not just someone who is black, we always say like a black person, right? So how do we bring that humanity in the way that we're speaking about the different people, the different groups, and include people or person as much as possible?
I just, can I, you know me, I hate to, I have to inject stories. I just recently heard someone was talking about being questioned about, you know, was their event accessible? And they said, oh, we only got one request from a wheelchair. I bet it was a person using a wheelchair. So that's another example of where people, you know, dehumanize. It's dehumanizing to say that that's your identity rather than that it's something that is an aspect of you. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no, I actually love when you say that. I see Jose raising their hand.
Yes, I was just going to ask, what about, I've heard a lot from disability groups recently about using the word disabled instead of saying person with disabilities. And they're using the word disabled to reference themselves. Do you, why have you heard about that?
I've heard that too, Jose, and I think there's, there's as many ways to think about it as there are people who are engaged in, and you know, there's a lot of people who are engaged in what they call the social model of disability that says there's nothing wrong with us, it's that the society is not built for us and it's that's the problem. And there are other folks, I mean, I think the people-centered language is really helpful. But there are people who say, you know, exactly like you say, I don't have a problem with that. I have a disability. You can call me disabled. So there is a lot of feeling. And I think the most important thing is use the most respectful language that you're aware of. And then if you're corrected, just immediately say, thank you for correcting me and use the correction.
Yeah, I think best practice is letting people as often as possible self-identify.
And that's the same actually for a lot of things around pronouns and other, you know, other ways of just allowing people to speak to who they are.
And language continues to evolve, so it's, it may change and that's okay. And yeah, and people also claim, reclaim, some groups of people are also reclaiming an identity that maybe was considered derogatory before, like the word queer, for example. So but it's, but it's that group of people who get to decide, right? Who they want to claim, reclaim that word back. And yes.
There's controversy everywhere, truly. People have a lot of different feelings about a lot of things.
Yes, so remove participation barriers. That's another one, trauma-informed, and that's a continuous improvement process. And we're going to be giving you more examples about how to, being very specific. So now that you're saying those principles, mindset, well, so what do we do? What are some of the practices? Yeah. Yes, and the historical harm around data. A lot of that information that, an example, it's like the African-American community being used as research subjects without their consent. And there has been a lot of medical experiments done on the African-American community, men and women. And there has been a lot of trauma around that, historical trauma, around the trust in government and the medical field. So there are things to consider about institutions and data. So here's where we come.
Joe has a Santa.
Yeah, I want to, this is a comment or a question or a lament, but somebody said earlier, I think maybe Judith, that building trust takes time. And the best way to engage people is to have authentic, long-term relationships with them. And we just had the almost case study and how not to do that with the Independent District Commission that, you know, worked their hearts out and were incredibly committed, but were just basically thrown out there and told, okay, you know, meet with these people and, you know, engage them. And now we're sort of starting over again. And I think the complaint is that, you know, the city has had ample opportunities, going back to at least Vision PDX and maybe before that, to build long-term, authentic relationships with community-based organizations and with people in those communities. And instead, it's okay, well, we need engagement to check the box. So here we are, I'm from the city and I'm here to engage you. And I'm, you know, the latest in a long line of people and you know who they are, but I don't even know who they are. And it feels like we're being, I mean, our engagement plan and the values in it, I think, are just great. But we're not in a position to actualize that. We're just sort of getting thrown into it once again. And some of us happen to have ongoing relationships that we can build on. But somehow every effort has to start over.
And you know, I will say, this is my opinion only, it's not been certified or approved by the City of Portland, is that I think a couple of things, well, you notice, you know, what was the Office of Neighborhood involvement and then civic life has shrunk. And our commitment, I think, to, I mean, it's one of the things I was very proud of in Portland and loved, that I really felt like we had a commitment to the community, not just engagement, but really deliberative democracy, really bringing people in, really hearing voices. That seems to have not, does not seem to have the same value right now. And you're right, you know, we bring in different people. And I think one of the things I'm hopeful for in the change of government is there won't be as much political upset, right? Because what you get is new projects and, you know, like I said, Joe and I were around for Vision Into Action and then the Portland Plan and then it became the, you know, Comprehensive Plan Upstate. But also what happens when new people are elected, they don't always want to attach to the thing the last person did. So sometimes long-term planning is very frustrating. So I think that as well, and you know, you have my sympathies and my thanks for what you're doing to be here because it is really important. But I also know that it's been a frustrating process for a lot of folks. And yeah, it is, we are far from perfect in it. There's, Yolanda, we talked before and then I said, you know, we're going to go in and talk about, this is ideally how the city thinks it needs to be done to people are experiencing and not being done that way. And so, you know, I just want to say that we are aware of that juxtaposition and that this is our North Star.
I can't seem to raise my digital hand, but.
Fortunately, you have a real live one right here.
So convenient. But I've served on a number of city committees and I will say that this one is better. It's not perfect, but I mean, the way I was shut down in past committees was really, why was I even there, I wondered? And in this one, I feel like at least it's going somewhere.
That's great to hear. Yeah. I know a lot of us are really grateful that you all are willing to serve in this capacity because it's really important, you know? We're in a historic moment and I think everyone's worked really hard to do the very best they can do. And we're, you know, it's, I keep telling people, it's kind of like Mr. Toad's Wild Rides. Buckle your seatbelt. So Yolanda, you were about to talk about some more ways to think about, just, you know.
And this is maybe an opportunity to also collect the wisdom of this group as well, of like engagement practices that you have seen or that you practice that have made you feel that really aligns with the values of creating that culture of belonging, inclusion, and equity. We're going to give you some examples and then you can, this is a moment where you can participate. So one, as you know, is pronouns. It's important to see people for who they are and we cannot make assumptions about people's gender by the way that they look or their names and how they're presenting. So sharing pronouns is an inclusive practice. And not making it mandatory or like something that they have to force and share it, it's trauma-informed because not everyone feels safe and feels comfortable sharing that information. Not everyone is going through the same transition about their identity. So that is why we often, when we ask for this piece of information, we tell people, like, if you feel comfortable, you know, share your pronouns. When in doubt and you don't know pronouns, gender-neutral pronouns. And that's a practice that I'm constantly trying to do. And it's always a continuous improvement process because we tend to do the default, right? The other thing is about food options and distribution. I'm not sure how much engagement you will be doing in person besides food options. I once went to a community engagement event and I really appreciated the order of food distribution, food sharing, where they would ask people who, you know, have family, who have children or who may need more time in gathering their food to actually go first. And that's, it might seem like a simple practice, right? Like it's like, of course, we've seen that, but you will be surprised of how many community engagement events where food is shared, that that is not happening. I have a dad who has some mobility challenges and navigating spaces with him has actually given me a lot of insights, right? Of what is it, what is it to be in a body that requires more care? So making even that practice, right? And even having some reserved seating areas, right? Because sometimes you go to a community event and it takes you some time to get there by finding the place, transportation challenges, blah, blah, blah. And by the time you get there, if again, if you have some challenges with caring for yourself and your body and you get there in this more seating, seating available. So how do we create a seating arrangements for family and kids? For people, older adults and people with different, with disabilities?
Microphone use.
A microphone usage.
How often do you hear people say, oh, I don't need it, right? Yes, they do.
We often, I often like to share with people, it's like, it's actually not for us. It's for the people in, it's for people here. It's because it's showing that we care about the people who are actually in the room and it's not about us. And microphone usage is something that I've learned, that it's not about just using the microphone, but also knowing how to use it, right? We all, I'm gonna, we all get scared by the microphone. We get intimidated with the microphone, many of us. So oftentimes, it's not just about the microphone, we're just reminding people, right? Like, please get it closer to your mouth. And sometimes I do that with Judith, like remember Judith, like we have to be reminding each other when using the microphone.
And we have, again, we have the tip also that if you're in it, you know, if you're in a situation where a lot of people want to talk and you know some people, don't let go of the microphone. Hold it up, hold it up to them. But that is learned through hard lessons, through many things I facilitated where it's like, come on, come on. Not a good look. Avoid that.
And as you, as you're, you know, the host, you're hosting an event, you have a lot of power in setting the culture in that moment, right? And oftentimes, it's a good reminder for us when we're facilitating, it's like we get to set that culture. And so it's important for us to model, model what we want to see. Are we perfect? No, we're not perfect. We're always trying to improve. And we start with small steps. Sometimes it doesn't require a lot of work or preparation to start implementing some of those practices. The other one is minimize the use of initialisms and acronyms. We are the city of acronyms and initialisms, right? So that creates a lot of language barriers, right? So whenever possible, right, if you're going to use an initialism and acronym, make sure that you are explaining what that means at the beginning. And also, it's important for people who are multilingual, there is a lot of interpreters that you may use and sometimes initialisms and acronyms don't translate well in other languages. We also, of course, have a lot of people that are just not familiar with the acronyms and initialisms. So it's as simple as that. Sometimes we don't even, it doesn't even cross our mind. And so that's one way to start thinking about, like, how do we create practices where people feel more like they are also part of the culture, that they belong? Allow pauses and silences. That's something that I'm practicing. That's something that I'm practicing in Espanol and Spanish, I speak really fast. I'm just like, blah, blah, blah. In English, I have to remember that sometimes that doesn't work well with me. So it's important for me to slow down and allow for pauses and silences. So that I can support other learning and listening abilities. So Jamila, Judith, this is your time to share and then we'll open it to the, to the group.
Yeah, let me gather my thoughts.
Okay, well, I will then say the pauses and silences. I remember learning a big lesson about that culturally, there are different expectations around pauses. And I remember learning from a native man who was a social worker who talked about going in to observe. And there was somebody who, they, the, the social worker people had decided that this mom was not engaged in the sun's treatment, like was not paying attention, was not willing to, you know, engage. And so he like watched through a one-way mirror to watch the interaction. And then, you know, and the woman says, so, you know, what do you think about that? So, I mean, do you agree? Well, do you have another way to do it? And he said, you never stop talking long enough for her to know you were done. And so, you know, I've learned that, I mean, I talked in a family that you had to talk before the sentence was done. I mean, it was a jump, it was like this, and so I have to watch it for myself. But that's an important thing to remember, different cultures have different senses of that pause. And sometimes that is the case, that people don't know you're done talking until you let the silence sit there for a minute and they know you're, you're completed it.
And I think those moments of silence are so important because sometimes as facilitators, we panic and we think that, oh no, like it's quiet. But that gives people a time, a chance to reflect, a chance to process, like a chance to sort of sit there with their thoughts. And so not being afraid of silence and thinking of silence as something fruitful and potentially productive. And I think the use of initialisms and acronyms is really important too, because, I mean, I'm new to the city of Portland and like Yolanda was saying, there's 10 million acronyms for everything. And I don't know, half the time I don't know what people are talking about just yet. And so when we rely on initials and acronisms, we make assumptions about what people in the room already know. And so when we make those assumptions, sort of the gap between people gets wider. And so our goal, again, is always to sort of reduce that gap in power between people.
And it's hard for people to say, I don't know. I mean, it's really hard, it's hard to be the one to say it again and again. I remember in Lens, I, we, you know, I would notice that we'd all be seeming to be on the same page. And then suddenly there would be a hard stop in terms of the community's agreement. And I later figured out, people started talking about things in a way that they felt like they didn't understand. And they'd rather say no than agree to something that they didn't understand. So that helped me as a facilitator, understand where I need to say, you know, would you like to know more about that? But take that, taking that pressure off of people to not have, it's the same thing actually with the microphone, right? Not if you, if you say, can everybody hear me? But a lot of people, you know, there's stigma around stuff. People don't want to say, I'm hard of hearing or I can't, you know? So that's one of the things to remember too, is it's hard for people to jump up and be the one who becomes the outlier. Yeah, I am wondering if any of you have, I'm sure you have a lot of ideas too, Joe. I mean, you're deeply experienced in this.
I got two people.
Oh, you do? Good, give the answer.
So we're going to start with Amy and then Leah.
Um, okay, I'm trying to form this thought, but I'm interested in like, as far as trauma-informed engagement goes. So there's obviously the historical traumas and understanding those dynamics. But there's also like, a lot of really recent conflict in Portland that we've recently experienced and is still kind of present and fresh, including things like the city council trying to deter this process. And, you know, the, just things that are happening presently and in the last few years. I recently saw film of the, the riots, protests that have been happening. And it feels, I'm just curious, what is the trauma-informed way to acknowledge trauma? That's like presently unfolding in a way that's not going to be like detrimental to the cause, you know? Like obviously we want to build partnership as speakers, but it feels a bit disingenuous to say, trust the city now, but don't look at any of the stuff the city is presently doing.
Yeah, did you see the tipping point?
Yeah.
Yes, it's really interesting, isn't it?
Yeah, I saw that on Saturday and I was like, this is right now.
Yeah, I highly recommend it.
Election cycle.
Yeah, yeah, about our time with the Black Lives Matter and everything that was going on. And all, all the filming is done by folks who were out live streaming. Is, I thought it was well done, it was, it's very thought provoking. Well, I will just say for me, it's being transparent and acknowledging. And I generally, you know, if I go into a situation and there's a lot of conflict, I like to acknowledge the conflict right off the bat. And say, I know there's a lot of conflict here. I know people feel, can have, feel some very different ways about this. And, you know, I know there's strong feelings about it. And, you know, strong feelings are welcome here. And, you know, sometimes I may ask you to step back, take breath, you know, do, to, to, to like, kind of take a moment, right, before, if, if, if it's becoming disruptive, right? So for me, that's my, that's my plan is to tell the truth. We know there's division, right? And we know that, that it's a place that, but I, I think most of us don't want to stay divided, right? And so I always think, and name it and then the goal, right? What do you, what do you all think? What do other people think?
Yeah, I'd agree. I think the most important thing is to, to validate that, to acknowledge it and to bring it into the room because it's explicitly, because it's already there, whether you're speaking on it or not. And I think sometimes we think that if we don't acknowledge something, it doesn't exist. But failing to acknowledge the reality that people are living in and dealing with right now does the opposite of what we're trying to do. Like that actually serves to erode trust and to make it difficult for people to connect. And so to acknowledge it head-on, I think makes connection easier and more meaningful and more authentic.
Yeah, and I think that it requires, if you are the presenter, you're the host, you're the person leading the space to, for one, to be comfortable with that discomfort. Because I feel like personally, like I know myself. And oftentimes I can get triggered of just talking about, hey, you know, it's, it's difficult, it's violence and blah, blah, blah. And using certain words that I know that can be triggering and can be heavy. And so watching also in my body, like when I'm like, okay, I know that, I know that I'm going to go into a meeting and that it's going to be a difficult situation and I have to address a recent event that just happened. And so I have to actually prepare myself too, because I have to be also be okay with bringing it up, bringing the elephant in the room. And we are wired to avoid conflict. We're wired to maybe try to protect ourselves. So a lot of the times it's just getting ourselves just ready to say, it's okay, we're going to be okay. And just reminding people that you have a community, right? Take care of yourself, whatever that looks like for you. And that's why I try to tell people, like, take care of yourselves, whatever that looks, looks for you, right? Rely on your community. So it's that, like talking about this, but also giving them something and not just leaving them hanging with, this is the, this is the elephant and there it is, so.
If we got three hands up, yay, Leah, Joe and then David, does that look like the right order?
I'll hop in.
Everybody?
I'm here, I'm Leah.
Yay.
I, I wanted to say all of this is really great and I wanted to also offer some perspective on engagement about thinking before people show up in the room. Because, I mean, there are so many directions to go in with that. But one that comes to mind a lot with city stuff is socioeconomic status or class when we're talking about this. Who actually is able to show up? And I feel like that shows up in a lot of different ways that I consider. One of them being when we're planning things. For many, many years, I worked at a bike shop, which meant I worked until 7:30 in the evening, non-weekends. But there's the assumption that if you show up for things like this, you have a white collar job that's Monday to Friday, nine to five. And it's really difficult to engage if you exist outside of that. And so when we're planning things really makes a difference in terms of who we're inviting to the table. But also taking into account the, the cost of volunteering your time and what a privilege it is. Like whether it's, you know, having enough money or resources to travel to where you need to go, having enough money for childcare. Just having the space in your, like, time and day to be able to offer it. And I think, I don't know, everyone's doing their best, but sometimes it means that by offering these engagements, we're just offering people with enough like privilege, especially financial privilege, to be able to show up. So I'm always curious about like, are there ways, you know, can we provide travel vouchers? Can we pay people for their time? You know, can we do this at like creative hours so that we're including people that don't just work nine to five?
And the answer is yes to several of those questions. I mean, we have, and we are constantly relooking at the usage of, you know, vouchers and not surprisingly, I think sort of during the pandemic, it was get everything out, people were in desperate need, right? And then now it's like, did we get everyone's name? And it looked out of control. But we are still trying to figure out exactly what, we have a pause on gift cards right now, right? But there's a couple of things. One thing I think is, is partnering with organizations that serve communities that might, you know, that already, that there's comfort there and it's also a trusted resource for you to be with. And then so like, we will pay an organization to be the convener of something. And then they also can make decisions about food, about compensation for people, and we don't have to worry as much about that. And yes, I, I've always seen that we have TriMet vouchers, we have other ways. We've, we've gotten lift rides for people for some of the committees. And, and so, you know, those things, there's still awkward things, I think, like childcare. I always felt like, well, that's great if you have childcare, but I don't want to take my, you know, six-year-old out at seven at night. They, they need to be in bed. We are now, you know, we're going to be doing many more hybrid meetings and I think that's helpful too. But really great thought.
Yeah, to your point about hybrid meetings, I think it is so great for so much of this. But the other thing that comes to mind in equity there is that we're making assumptions now about people's comfort with technology.
Yeah.
And.
We're working on that.
You own a computer, you know? Like I think it wasn't a stated requirement for G-Tech, but I think we've all realized, like, you need one, you know? So just, I don't know, I know that that's like a tough enough to crack, but just something to consider.
Absolutely. And if you have, I, I, we often recommend to do meetings at two, at different times, right? So with Smart City, the project we've done, I'm really proud of the way we've done our community engagement. And so we'll have like something on a Saturday, but then something on like a weeknight, you know? To try to make sure we can capture a couple of different.
I love the participation and we have five more people, so I would love to hear from them. Joe, I think you're next.
I can help make this shorter, oops. Mute. So I can help make this shorter because it's like, you guys have been reading my notes, it says childcare, transportation. Work with community-based organizations and pay them for their time. And ideally, if they care about what we want to talk about, they're going to get their people out. They're going to know what those people need in order to participate fully. And I think a lot of this comes down to budget. And I don't know too, maybe you do, do we have a budget to really be able to do the things we're talking about? Because if we do, it's going to make a world of difference.
We can get back to you.
It's no on the bus pass. Already got that. Really? So if you need any backup on making sure you're able to do equitable engagement, let us know because we can, we can put some words in around that.
I guess I want to say something a little bit different and that is, you know, come to this with really different experience, expertise, you know, perspectives. And that's why, why we're here. That's why this group was sort of formed, to bring our, our different things to the table. Some of us have a lot of experience doing community engagement and I hope that we're able to.
Thank you. William.
Oh, thank you. I wonder whether you could give some thought or comment on a couple, I, I would perceive sources of resistance. One would be concern of that Washbiss Group in your first slide about loss of status. And I think there can be an art counter-argument that it might be loss of relative, you know, inclusion might be loss of relative status, but it doesn't mean loss of status. It instead means raising everyone up to, you know, a good status. And there can be an argument that it is in the social and economic interest that everyone do that. I welcome your comments on that. Another one, another, I think, source of resistance is a perception of individualism or rugged individualism. And saying that the Washbiss Group has benefited from, you know, benefits before, that's not going to address the resistance. So I, I welcome your comments or, and this probably requires a lot of deliberation. So I, I, I'll raise those and welcome your thoughts.
Trying to hold back. Well, you know, we deal with resistance every day in our work. And I think some of it is, and coming from being a mediator, also Jamila has a lot of experience in that area as well. You need to validate where people are first, because people will present their, where they are in their position. But we really try to get to the interest, you know? And so I think to, to, to recognize that, that first of all, to listen to folks, right? And, and hear what their concern is. I agree with you, William, that we are all better off. And it is a problem that we have this individualism and this rugged individualism. Even though it seems to me, everything we're learning in science and everything else just keeps showing how connected we are. So for, for me, part of it is if you're in a group and someone's being very resistant, one of my strategies is don't center the resistance, right? Acknowledge, understand that you feel this way. You know, you, you may not agree with me in the end, but I, I'd like the opportunity to be heard, right? Hear me out. And so a lot of this comes when we do our Equity 101 training with folks. And for us also, we, we make it clear that, you know, whatever your individualism is, the reality is that, you know, especially because we're working in government, that everybody does better when everybody does better. It just is, makes sense, right? We're, we're not, our city is not benefiting by the level of poverty that we're experiencing on the streets now. We're not, you know, we, we, we have to live together. But mostly for me, it's not getting too reactive, acknowledging people's feelings about it. And sometimes I'll say to people, I'm happy to have a conversation with you later, you know, if that becomes disruptive. But yeah, there's, and I think there's fear, right? There's a sense, but it's not, I mean, I think about middle-class white men are, have an epidemic of suicide, right? Nobody, nobody's happy, right? And part of the, part of also, I was hearing recently that somebody really started the conversation around class. And that that actually was an entree to get to race. Because for a lot of folks, I mean, you think about a lot of working-class folks who are feeling resistance around conversations about equity and equality and all of those things are actually have exactly the same outcome needs that we want for other communities. You know, so, so, you know, we want people to be able to organize, we want people around their needs. We want people to have access to healthcare. We want people to be able to buy their home, to, you know, send their kids to college. Like that's, I think we can find the values and interests that we all share together.
Thank you, Judith. I really love the engagement. We're just going to go with Jamie and Amy and then we're going to move on to the next topic about facilitation. Because this is about, talking about facilitation and how do we do, do that in a way that is equitable and also trauma-informed. So Jane.
Oh, thank you very much. I'll be brief. Less than a week ago, I was fortunate to be able to go to the Old Town Chinatown Community Association to sort of give an update on where we are with this new government transition plan. And I went, I went earlier than my, my time because I wasn't quite sure how to get there. And as I sat in the room, there were maybe 50 people there and 50 people on Zoom. People are royally ticked off. I mean, and you can imagine, if you were in Old Town Chinatown, you would be having a tough time. And that's what I listened to for quite a long time. So, yeah, here I was going to come up and talk a little bit about, you know, what's new with the city when they had. what's new with the city when they had been quite verbose about how they really did not like the city. So, so here's the good news. The good news is that because I really wasn't a city person, but I was representing the Government Transition Advisory Commission, and I was more like them, I was a community person. First of all, that gave me some trust banking and they, and they turned. You can almost feel it in the presentation that they turned. So I think that we're in a great position. We think that we're not in a great position, but we are in a great position to have this message and to particularly carry the banner for something new and different. And that's where the hope is. So I think I look at my, you know, all of my team members here as being the hopeful banner carriers. So please go and do that. But the fun thing that came out of this was not only how people dislike initials and acronisms, they really, really laughed because I kept jumping slides because I said to them, oh no, that's city speak. The slide was so convoluted, not just, it didn't have any acronisms and initials in it, but there is a way that planning organizations talk. I used to work for the Portland, we talk the same to people, the way that the city does. So one of the things I think we have to be cognizant of is that we have to, you know, talk like real people. So that's going to be a little bit of challenge with our, our materials. But I think we're in a great place and I'm finding all of this super, super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your insight. Amy?
I'll be quick so Zach can have a moment because he hasn't spoken yet. I just want to name our lack of media outreach and proactive media strategy as an equity issue. Because with full support to the media folks, they're awesome and they have a great plan. And we haven't heard yet kind of what they have on deck. But the more energy we put into those like non-traditional media streams like podcasting, whatever, local radio stations, individual shows, the more we as a committee put energy into them putting energy into it, they're incredibly talented professionals who know what they're doing. And as much as we can put our weight as a committee behind them doing media outreach, it's an equity issue.
Nice. Great point. Thank you. Zach, you will be the last person.
I know that you had only designated to, so thanks for the extra time, Yolanda. So, you know, in thinking about how to go about trauma-informed engagement when we're asking ourselves to meet people who have historically not been connected in government and we're doing something that's kind of technocratic in a lot of ways, and it's a challenge. And I, I just am recognizing that challenge and something I promised a while back that I have not fulfilled, but to provide us as a committee some materials that are kind of round, like very foundational civic engagement tools. Because otherwise, we're coming in with the expectation and assumption that people understand, you know, what charter is and what, like, how government operates. And so I think that's like a really important piece, both in the, like, responsibility that we own of helping people, you know, all ships rise with the tide kind of mentality, but also in, you know, acknowledging that there might be trauma based in, like, steeped in that. And understanding, you know, if you're talking about the, you know, access to a vote, like we were talking about before, or it can, it can be a very challenging environment. And so one of the, the things that I've learned that I have not had the opportunity to implement in this committee, but is to do as much ground truthing to what information is being sought after before actually being in that space. You can sometimes access that with the organizer. Not always, it's not something to rely on because often they are more connected than the people who show up. But to, to extent that you can adapt to that room ahead of time gives you a lot more opportunity to build trust and meet people where they are.
Thank you, Zach, for that. Right. Love it. Thank you so much for your engagement and participation, and the floor is yours, Jamila.
So it's been really exciting to hear everyone's, everyone's insight. Really appreciative of everyone's engagement and participation. And so as we transition a little bit to talk specifically about trauma-informed facilitation, I think I want to start by saying that trauma-informed facilitation practices are generally just best practices for facilitating in general. And so regardless of who's in the room, by focusing on connection and focusing on care as a facilitator, that's going to be best practices regardless of who's in the room. And so when we think about facilitation, we can split it up by thinking about things that you can do to prepare beforehand, things that you can do during the actual facilitation process, and then things that you can have in place afterwards. And so some considerations for, before facilitating is to start by thinking about who the best person to facilitate is going to be, based on identity, perhaps based on prior connection to the community, perhaps based on prior work experience or history. All of those things are going to be useful in helping to determine who the best person to facilitate is going to be. And then thinking about who the audience is going to be as you sort of prepare to think about content. So who's going to be in the room? What are the needs of the people that are in the room? And if you don't know, who can you ask to find out? And then thinking a little creatively about content, how can I make sure that the content that I'm sharing is going to be inclusive? That it's going to be accessible? I think it was Jane who was saying earlier that there were some slides that were like, just, they might not have been using initials and acronyms, but that it was city speak. And so how do we make sure that the content that we're sharing is going, that people are going to understand what it is that we're saying? Because engagement isn't just talking at people, it's talking to people, it's talking with people and giving people a chance to talk back. And so even about, it's a chance to be creative when we're thinking about how we're putting content together, making space for the different ways that people access and process information. And so maybe perhaps not relying exclusively on text, but thinking of ways to incorporate maybe music, maybe movement, maybe video. So just giving people different doors to walk through to access whatever information it is that we're hoping to communicate and share. And then some things to do during the actual facilitation process that are, that go a long way towards building trust and building relationship. And the first is to have clear objectives. And that sometimes we have objectives as facilitators and we don't always communicate what those objectives are to the people that are in the room. And so making, just making folks a more active participant in the process is always going to be really important. Having an agenda and sharing that agenda with people so that they know what to expect. And then it goes a long way towards building trust to follow through on that agenda. And so to be careful and thoughtful about time management and things like that to make sure that whatever it is that you told people to show up for is what's actually going to happen in the space. It's also going to be important to create opportunities for participants to learn and process in affinity groups, perhaps. There was a question, I think William asked earlier about ways to deal with resistance or disruption. And so one of the ways to sort of not necessarily contain resistance, but to make sure that folks are having conversations with people that maybe they have, that they're more on the same page as, is to give people the opportunity or the option to process information or engage in conversation in affinity groups. Divest from a culture of expertise and utilize the wisdom in the room is going to be really important, especially when working with an engaging community. So not assuming that we're experts on anything, not assuming that we're in a role to teach anyone anything, but that we're trying to engage in a process of co-learning and making space for people to share what they're thinking and what they already know and taking that information and that sharing just as seriously as whatever information or content it is that we're delivering and sharing. And then whenever we bring people together, there's always a chance that someone might say something offensive, whether it's intentional or unintentional, doesn't matter as much. But as facilitators, being responsible for maintaining the integrity of the space, and by that, I mean interrupting harm when it happens and attending to impact over intent. And so that's not to say that someone's intentions are irrelevant. Intentions matter, of course, but the impact, especially on, it's just, it's important to center the most impacted in that situation. And then what, sometimes we think that, okay, the engagement is over, like the event or this talk that I was facilitating is over, but it's not. And so how can we make sure that we're still being trauma-informed even after the event is over? And one is to provide resources. So whether that's opportunities for continued learning, whether it's resources that were sort of mentioned in whatever it is that you were sharing, making sure that people have a way to access it. It could even be like printing things out ahead of time so that folks can take things with them instead of assuming people have access, like go online and go to a website. Providing opportunities for participants to debrief, whether that's in small groups, whether that's with facilitators, and then giving people an opportunity to share their feedback with facilitators. And I think sometimes, like, I've been at events where at the end of the event, someone will be like, oh, like, here's a link to a survey to, like, give us your feedback on this survey as we're walking out the door. And so if we think that people's, we want to show people that we value what they say, that we value what they're thinking, that we value their feedback. And the way to do that is to build time into our, into whatever it is that we're facilitating for people to give us that feedback and then to take that feedback very seriously. And so to figure out how we can refine our future facilitation practices based on that feedback.
You had a comment, you'd like to know what we meant by debriefing affinity groups. Can you describe affinity groups?
That's a really good question, yeah. And sorry for making an assumption that we sort of all have an understanding of what affinity groups mean. I'm talking about, yeah, it's the option of allowing people to discuss in small groups and that can be oftentimes like a racial affinity group. And so giving people of color an opportunity to debrief or discuss something together, giving white folks an opportunity to debrief and discuss together. And it's not to say that like cross-racial learning isn't important. It is absolutely. But if perhaps we're talking about something more sensitive, then giving people the opportunity to share in sort of a more protected space. Or if it's a situation where we feel like there might be a lot more resistance, then giving folks an opportunity to process maybe in a white affinity group in a place that won't be harmful to folks of color in the space might be, is often like a really, a helpful way to sort of structure the time and the space.
We have recently encountered folks who have said that they feel like the affinity groups are discriminatory and create segregation. And so, you know, for us, our way, our process is, everyone can be wherever they need to be, right? But you kind of create the space with the explanation of what you're doing and hope that people will join in. But when we've recently come up against that, it's one of the things that we've talked to attorneys and others about is what is our obligation and, you know, it is that anyone can join. So it gets a little trickier, but it can be very helpful to, you know, and depends on the room you're in too, right? And who's gonna, if you have a lot of young people, you want to maybe have young people have their own group because they tend to not get, you know, to talk when there's adults in the, you know, in the group. So you can think differently about where do you create a space that people feel most comfortable to speak.
Yeah, affinity groups share experience, groups that have shared experience and language is one of them. There's a lot of, when you do an engagement, multilingual people that will feel more comfortable being with other Spanish-speaking countries, Spanish-speaking people. Sometimes you might just get one or two people, persons, but it's okay to think about that as well.
Can I ask, like, within practice of thinking about the affinity groups? Because I do like that, the idea of it allows kind of group think in a way of like confidence and trust within a group to be able to speak what interests them or what they are concerned about. And so in organizing our meetings with community, it's often, well, at least I've found so far, kind of like a 45-minute, 50-minute, which maybe is hard and to, it's not necessarily conducive to doing that. But I'm curious if maybe it's like a well-trodden path that I'm just completely oblivious to of like, you know, a way of incorporating that really powerful skill to, into a 45-minute kind of way of engaging in community. And maybe there's like lessons that others, if they've done this before, that I'd be really interested. Because I do think like with these students, like I'm trying to reach out to like Reed and Melissa Clark and getting students, I think that's going to be really like a most valuable way of engaging with that group because they often are working in groups and teams. But I don't know how to do that with like a 45 minutes.
This will sound like it's maybe not going directly to that, but one of the things I've found is that it really helps to get everybody's voice in the room in the very beginning. And so that's why I like doing some kind of icebreaker. And usually I like to have it in a dyad, two people with each other so that everyone's voice is being heard originally. And I do find that that somehow breaks the ice in a way that it's more, that you have more people willing to sort of contribute. It relaxes sort of the, I don't know what it is exactly. I can feel it happen, but I don't know exactly how to describe what happens. So even though that's not about how do you create an affinity group, I think if you can think of a question, right? Or, you know, I'd like to know what you think about this? Or how do you see yourself participating? How would you, how would you describe, you know, thinking about how would you pass the word to others to make sure that people are engaged and making sure their vote counts? Something, you know, like stuff like that. So if you have a meaningful question, it doesn't have to be long. Sometimes our groups are, you know, eight minutes in our trainings. That's my thought.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, 45 minutes is not a long time and it's still 45 minutes. And so sometimes it just means like being really creative and thoughtful about how you structure meetings and time with people. And so I think a lot of times we like fall into a routine where we do the same thing every single meeting and that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. And so it can be as simple as like, if it's an in-person meeting, having like poster boards set up that have like, maybe one says students. And so asking people to sit next to like the poster board that as they're walking in, that they feel most like aligned with. And so, yeah, I think it's just going to require like being creative in terms of how we, how we engage people and not feeling beholden to the way that like we're comfortable or regularly do things.
Yeah.
And with your topic, that could be things like, what district are you from? Like, you know?
And we actually saw that, that in IDC, some of those meetings where it was, I think, well, it was like adding your inputs on certain aspects of it or like what your favorite map was or something along those lines.
It also doesn't have to be highfalutin'. I mean, people tend to sit next to the people that they know already.
Yeah.
So, you know, could you just take five minutes? And how about if you three talk, you three talk, we three talk, ask a question? And then as Judith says, once you've spoken once, it's a lot easier to speak a second time. So the easier you make it to speak the first time, the easier it's going to be for people later on.
I love that. Thank you.
There's the good organizing thing, maybe the thermostat, not the thermometer. Set the temperature of the room.
Yeah. Are we okay? Time check.
Do you want one more? Well, I think a lot about research, birth documentation and training, and I think about different learning styles. So there's visual, that's me, auditory. And so we're doing that in most of these meetings, we have something to look at and we're hearing it. But there's also tactile. Jamila, you probably know these better than I do. So I like to try to address those, you know, provide some kind of tabletop exercise. And that can also kind of, you know, diffuse some of that tension or reticence to engage in other formats. And then I also don't want to forget about all the people who are afraid to speak in public because I used to be one of them. It took me a long time to work through that and all the people who have had their ideas dismissed. It's happened to me many times. So I always like to provide the opportunity to write an anonymous, or you can put your name on it too, but to write a comment and submit it. And when I was a city manager, I always had an anonymous suggestion box outside my office because there are people and you cannot expect everyone to come to a meeting and speak in public and they may be afraid that their ideas will be shut down because it's happened to them before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Excellent. Speaking of stretching and like kind of doing different ways of learning, how about we, if you're able, you can stand up. And I'm gonna stand up myself and I'm just gonna do a stretch, which what I like to do is just like to raise my, also my hands up to the sky. That feels really nice on my back. And there's just a tendency that the body, it's just like, ugh.
And then just take a breath.
Oh, wow. And then we, and then the body, and then the body automatically wants to move and it wants to go from side to side sometimes or whatever feels comfortable for you, just for a few seconds here. We do have a, I don't know how much, how many minutes you need for the, for the end, for the closing.
I was like, what?
Just one minute. We can always wrap up earlier, right? We don't have to use every single minute. So maybe just take a little pause and see if people have any final comments, questions. Yeah, it's a long day, right, for some. Resources, so since it doesn't seem like people have any comments. We are here as a resource. It's also a lot of resources that we shared with Julia and I hope that can be distributed in one way or another. I don't know if the two of you have any other resources that you want to add.
Only just as what Joe said early on, you have so much knowledge in this group. It's really wonderful. And so, you know, you've probably already figured out each other is a giant resource for, for your learning. And like Yolanda said, we are around, you know, you can reach out to us if we can be helpful. Yeah.
I think we've also agreed to go in pairs, which.
I was wondering about that. I was thinking that would be smart.
And if it's particularly challenging group, you know, some of us who have more facilitation experience and experience working with challenging groups, they can take that on.
Yeah.
Be part of that affinity group.
Nathan, I just thank you again for your service to the city in this way. It's a big deal. And really appreciative, both personally and from, I know the importance is, somebody was saying you went and you weren't, you weren't from the city. So that really helped, I think. I think that was Jane. And, you know, I know how that works and it's great. So thank you so much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. You, you do have a lot of power, even if it may seem that in moments you don't. But invite you to try to find where that power that you have, because you do have a lot. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And before we wrap up, I just want to do some next steps. So again, this meeting is being recorded, so folks who haven't been able to watch it or if there are pieces you wanted to re-watch, that will be up on our website. And our next meeting is, was next, next Wednesday, September 20th. And so you'll see materials for that tomorrow. And, you know, there were some things that we talked about here, for example, Julia, we talked about media and Joe about resources and that trip, there's some of the best practices we talked about. And so I think those are things we can come back to you all with or, you know, just kind of continue to keep in mind. So thank you all for being here. And that is the end of our special meeting today. So thanks for being here.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being so interesting. So Juliet, I'm finishing, I'm not, I'm not.
Give you five minutes back.